Gentlemen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the municipality of Monroeville's zoning hearing board meeting for November 6th, 2019. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Sharon, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosa Pell.
Here.
Mr. Grizziak.
Here.
Mr. Dira Augustino.
Here.
Mr. Dice.
Here.
Mr. Weldon.
Here.
Thank you. Looking for an approval of last month's minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Approved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Under new business, Paul.
First item, 19-29-A, Paul T. O'Toole. Applicant requests a variance from section 207.3 minimum yard requirements for accessory structures of the Monroeville zoning ordinance number 1443 as amended to construct a 10-foot by 12-foot shed that will encroach approximately eight feet into the required 10-foot side and rear yard setbacks for accessory structures. The property is located at 226 Barton Drive, tax parcel 976 L 323 in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Okay, is the applicant present? Left front, please. Do you sign in and state your name for the secretary?
Paul T. O'Toole.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Present your case.
Just wanted to struck, as it says, construct a shed and I don't want, if I had to within the 10 feet, I'd obviously be right in the middle of the yard, didn't want to take up too much of the yard. I've spoken to neighbors on all three sides and none of them seem to have an issue with it. I don't see any of them here this evening that would say anything different. Basically, that's about the sense of, I was not going to go right up again. It's a fenced-in yard, so I'm not going to go. Yes, would be back to where this red, back to the right, where that red ball is sitting, that's where it was going to be put, either facing inward to the yard or facing this way towards the street. I haven't decided on that just yet. I thought I was going to have it maybe done by the end of the month, but the company that I'm going to have done is not going to be able to do it until spring.
Okay. Paul, any neighbors?
No correspondents.
Nothing? Any board members have any questions?
Mr. O'Toole, how big is the shed?
10 by, 10 by 12.
10 by 12.
Any further questions, Paul? Any question?
You're just using it for storage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Trying to get a garage cleaned out, maybe try to put a car in there.
Gotcha.
Okay, all entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second item, 19-30-A, Sky Kathleen Unkley. Applicant requests a special exception from table 201A of the Monroeville zoning ordinance number 1443 as amended to operate a child daycare facility business from a single-family residence. The property is located at 2043 McKinney Road, tax parcel 544C 177 in the R2 One Family Residential Zoning District.
Thank you. Anybody here to testify on this? Please come forward. Sign in, please. State your name for the secretary, please.
Sky Kathleen Unkley.
Raise your right hand.
Yes.
You swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter should be the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Present your case.
I would absolutely love to have a daycare in my home. I actually have been watching kids for some time now. I have six kids of my own. I just want to be able to get approval to work at home and still stay at home with my younger children that are in school nearby and there's a lot of friends and neighbors that I help out already and they were really hoping that I can continue to do it and maybe take a few more children on, so. I mean, yes, that's about it.
Questions from the board?
One question I have is, do you have a license?
What do you mean by a?
A daycare license, if you're going to be watching other people's kids.
Once I get the zoning approved, I can go and fill out an application to become licensed as a daycare center. This is one of the steps that I have to do before I can submit my forms.
You say in your application that you have, you have six children?
Mm-hmm.
And then it says I have, and two of those go to school?
Yes.
And you take those, those are the two you take to the bus? You're not, at present time, you're watching others for hire?
Yes.
So you are, effectively, you're running a daycare at the present time?
Yes. I have, I only can watch three kids that are unrelated to me currently, but if I become, if I get, have a daycare center, I can have six, so.
When we looked at a photo of the property, there's a swimming pool in the backyard?
Yes.
Is that a concern?
No, because I definitely don't use the swimming pool.
You don't use it, but what about when you have the?
The little ones don't use it as much. They really don't use it at all. I have just stuff outside that we use, like a sand and water table that we use. I have like a baby pool that we use and things like that, so.
But even if you're not using it, just the attraction of having a above-ground pool?
Right. Well, a lot of the kids that I take care of are really young and they're very scared of the pool.
Yes, but.
You know, but I do have a fence around the pool, so, and it is locked and they can't get into it. And I make sure it is locked so they cannot go up there at all.
What about parking issues or traffic in the area for folks dropping off kids or were they neighborhood kids or what kind of?
Right, yeah. It shouldn't be too much of a problem. It's kind of like a quick drop-off, you know, pickup type of thing. I have a big area in the front of the house there that people can park, so.
That picture is your house to the right?
Yes.
Behind the hedges?
Yes. And it's not a lot of times that people come at the same time to drop off their children either, so I'm not like a big, it's not going to be like a big daycare facility, you know what I mean? It's going to be just something small, quaint, and it's going to just be in my home, so.
You have some kind of agreement with your next-door neighbor about the parking?
Yes, I've spoken to her, actually, recently, right before this, when she got the letter, just to make sure of everything and we have an agreement, yes.
Do you have it with you?
No, I'm sorry.
It's just an oral agreement?
Yes.
Do we have anything from?
Yeah, just, Paul, you, do we, any neighbors complain?
Yes, I have received written correspondence from two concerned residents in opposition.
Okay, do you have, do you have those documents?
I do.
Okay, let's just mark those one and twos as exhibits in this hearing. Why don't you give the board a reading of what these say so we know?
The first letter, dated November 4th, 2019, to myself, Paul H. Wildon. Dear Mr. Wildon, my name is Allen Lyons and this letter is being sent as a follow-up to the conversation we had on Thursday, October 31st. At that time, I expressed my concern and provided pictures regarding an upcoming case concerning a special exception to operate a child daycare facility on McKinney Road. As residents of McKinney Road, as residents of McKinney Road for the past 28 years, my wife and I have the following concerns regarding 19-30-A, Sky Kathleen Unkley, special exception to operate a child daycare facility from a single-family residence. Item one, she has been watching kids in her home for the past two to three years. Item two, she has transported multiple kids in a vehicle with an inspection sticker, with an inspection sticker that was out of date for over a year. Item three, clients arrive as early as 5:00 a.m. to drop off their children, doors are slammed, and cars are left running. Item four, most days, there has been a steady stream of families dropping off between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. Cars are parked on a street, parents unload kids without any concern that they are blocking driveways. The picture provided shows this, and I have photographs also. When cars are parked opposite of a driveway, it makes it difficult to enter and exit from your driveway on a good day, let alone in the winter when there is snow and ice. Item five, this is not just Monday through Friday, children are dropped off, picked up on weekends and holidays. Item six, during the day, kids are outside screaming slash crying. Item seven, pickup runs from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., doors slamming, kids crying, parents yelling for kids to get in cars. Kids often run away from their parents, darting out into the street from between cars, making it impossible for drivers to see them. They run into neighbors' yards, there is a lot of commotion to the point that it has impacted how much time can be spent outside on a deck or porch to relax after working all day. Item eight, McKinney Road is a narrow street when cars are parked on it. When you have kids running out on the street, you have a recipe for disaster. Item nine, this business brings multiple strangers into the neighborhood on a regular basis. In conclusion, McKinney Road is a residential neighborhood. We did not purchase our home to live across from a business. If we wanted that, we would have purchased somewhere else. Sincerely, Alan and Lorraine Lyons.
Did you say there were pictures attached to?
Yes.
How many? Two sheets?
Two sheets. They both show a vehicle parked at the end of the Lyons driveway, making it difficult for them to enter or exit.
Okay, so let's make those exhibits three and four. He mentions in there, you've been operating this for a couple of years.
Yes, that's true.
And you never came in to get a special exception before tonight?
No, because I've never needed to.
How many kids at one time do you have? What's the most?
The thing is, I think that, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I think.
Don't cut me off.
Okay.
You can, you can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Give additional testimony. How many kids? If you have six kids?
Mm-hmm.
And you want to have six more?
Yes.
So you have a total of 12 kids at some instance in time at this house, right?
Well, I have, when I say six kids, I have a 20-year-old that is one of my six children.
Let's not count him.
Okay, her, okay.
So now you're not.
So five, but that won't be until like 4:30 at night that would ever happen. And honestly, I don't always have kids from, I never have kids.
I understand that, but I mean, you're, you're asking us to grant you a special exception so that you can have as many as 11 kids and one 20-year-old in this house?
Right.
And how big's the house? What, what are we talking about? How many bedrooms?
There's four bedrooms.
You heard some of the statements that were made in that letter?
Yes.
Do you know this person?
No.
He must live across the street?
It looks that way according to the photographs.
Okay. All right, you wanted to say something else?
I just wanted to say that I don't normally have all of those kids at one time, ever. I know for.
We don't, we don't look at it.
Yeah, it's just, I think what I'm saying is, I'm sorry, I don't remember what I was going to say, I'm sorry. It looks like I have like a ton of kids because I have a lot of kids of my own. Do you know what I'm saying?
I understand that.
And I think a lot of people just misunderstand what's going on because I have a lot of children of my own.
I can count to 11, though.
And there's neighbor kids that come over sometimes to play, not always whenever I am babysitting, but I babysit from as early as 6:00 to 6:30 p.m.
I guess what I want to make sure you understand is, it's conceivable that there could be as many as 11 kids there if we grant this, this special exception. And that's, that's one of the things that we have to look at as to whether or not the character of the neighborhood is affected by having that many children in, in a confined area and, you know, there's, you say you have to get a license after you get this approval. Have you done anything to attempt to get the license before you got this?
Yes, and they told me I could not get the license until I got the approval here. I have already tried. They actually came into my home and inspected my home and they said they don't see any problem with me being able to operate a daycare in my home.
And you agree that you've been watching kids there for two or three years?
Yes, absolutely.
We have a second letter, Paul.
We do, sir. You do? Yeah, there is a second letter.
The second letter is an email from Rebecca Wyler. Hi, thank you again for taking my call the other day. Here are some of the questions and concerns I have as a resident on McKinney Road. Item one, are the residents tending to live at 2043 McKinney Road? How will having a business in the residential community affect property values? The residents chose to live in a neighborhood, not a business area. Item two, does the applicant have a plan for parking? This is a concern of most of the residents on the street on a daily basis. Many residents park on a street and given the past, parking was taken up by families dropping off and picking up their children. The street cannot accommodate added vehicles. Item three, will this childcare facility be a group daycare or a family daycare? There are provisions to operate each according to OCDEL, Department of Public Welfare, size of indoor and outdoor spaces. How many children will, item four, how many children will be at the home on any given day? Age, age, range, ration of care, ration of caregiver to child comes into play. Item five, will this be licensed daycare? Item six, is there safety precautions for the pool? Verified lifeguard slash CPR slash first aid? I hope that the board will take these questions and concerns into consideration while making their decision. I think watching a few children throughout the day would be fine. I have serious concerns if the resident will be operating, operating a childcare facility with many children and varying ages out of a home that is very tiny, no parking, and has a pool. Thank you, Becky Wyler.
No pictures attached?
No pictures, just.
Do you know where she lives in relation to?
She did not give an address.
You said that they came to your house and inspected it and gave you, do you have any paperwork or anything from them?
I, I believe I do. In my purse, I may have something. I mean, they came to my home, they said I had four children and they were upset that I had four children and they said, you can't have four kids in your home, you can only have three that are unrelated to you at the time. So they said I needed to quit watching kids or tell one of the family members that I wasn't able to watch one of their children. So that's what I've been doing is just watching three at the most right now until I can get more, I mean, to be able to, you know, operate a daycare, to have more, to have the four that I would have during the day. And who knows, maybe even two more, but I don't know.
Is there a maximum number if you got approval as to how many you could watch?
Yes, it's six.
Six plus your own?
Yeah, yeah. And last year, I had my two nephews and my, I mean, my nephew and my two nieces because my sister lost total custody of her kids and got into an accident and CYF was involved, so I was taking care of them for six months, so, and I don't take care of them anymore, they don't live with me anymore, but it's just, like I said, I think it's just misperceiving because of how things have been. Like I've had CYF people come to my home during the morning to pick up my niece, to take her to school all last year for six months and drop her off. It was nice they had that service, like it's just, it's just been some extra crazy stuff going on, you know what I mean? That is just not the norm, I think, for the last couple of years, unfortunately. But I, I don't really, I mean, I really don't, I never had anybody say anything to me about any problems with anything. And none of the parents have ever come to me and told me they've had issues with anyone if they ever parked and gotten their kids in the car or anything. It's just, I wish that people would have spoken up and talked to me because I would have definitely been able to speak with these people, but I don't know.
Are you the only provider of the care?
Yes.
Or is there anybody else you're going to be hiring or?
No, no, not at this moment.
And do you have all the required clearances and?
Absolutely, I have them all with me, too. I know that for a fact. I'm not quite sure if I have the letter from them or not. I can check, but I don't know. Do you want me to try to see if I have it with me?
No, that's fine, I'm just curious.
Yeah. I am CPR certified. I'm a certified nursing assistant. I've been a certified nursing assistance assistant since 2001. I've been a mom since I was 15. I just, it's really hard work, working as a certified nursing assistant as I'm getting older. It's, it's really nice to be able to take care of kids. I love children. The people that, the kids I watch, the parents, they love me, the kids love me, so I'm not trying to do anything absolutely crazy and sane. I just want to have just a small family home, in-home daycare center that's legal and that I don't get in trouble for a fine $300 a day.
Have you ever explored the possibility of having a daycare center at another facility?
I would love that. I just can't afford that, to be honest with you. I would absolutely love that, but I just don't have the money to do that.
Any further questions from the board?
No.
Anybody in the audience wish to come forward? Anything?
No, I think that you've got a record, ma'am.
Okay, all entertain a motion.
I want to make a motion to deny based upon the character of the neighborhood being impacted.
Motion to deny, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to deny, carry it, carry it.
Thank you.
Paul?
Third item of the night, 19-31-A, Side by Side Consulting, Inc. Applicant requests a variance from section 210, fences of the Monroeville zoning ordinance number 1443 as amended to construct a six-foot-tall solid fence in the front yard of the property that faces Saunders Station Road. The property address is 118 Belair Drive, tax parcel 1109E16 in the S Conservancy Zoning District.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience for this? Come forward, please. And state your name for the secretary, please.
Keith Jackson.
Okay, would you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter should be the truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
So help me God, yes.
Present your case.
Just minor correction, it is actually not Side by Side that is making the petition. We are making it on behalf of the trust entity that owns the home.
You, sir, are with Side by Side?
I am, yes. We're a vendor that works for the trust entity that owns the home and we're requesting a variance.
What's the proper name, then?
The proper name is, here it is, it's First National Trust Company, Jordan L.B. Reynolds Irrevocable Trust.
Okay, so that'll be the caption. And you can get it from Sharon, but that, so you're really making an amendment to amend the caption to so state that as the applicant, but go ahead.
Yes.
We can add that, go ahead.
I'm sorry. We're asking for a variance due to the fact that the house abuts two main streets, one in the front, one in the back, so considered two front yards. We're looking to put up a safety fence, basically, for the beneficiary who has some disability issues. And because of the, the rear yard being a front yard consideration with the fence, it was just going one corner over the, the buildable line on that back street.
How much are you going over?
It's a small corner. It's probably five feet on one leg and about eight feet on the other leg.
So it's a triangle?
Yes.
Is that all you have, sir?
You have pictures there? What, what do you, what?
Well, this is the site plan that was submitted.
That's all part of the packet that we already have?
Yes, correct, yes.
Just for clarification, what is the front yard here? The lot is in between two roads, Belair and Saunders Station, so they have two front yards. So where the fence is going is actually what most people would consider the rear yard, but because it fronts on Saunders Station, it's, it's two front yards.
Okay, any complaints on this one?
Nobody has contacted me. I had one resident come up, ask me some questions, but I answered his questions and haven't heard anything back.
Anybody in the audience wish to come forward? Members of the board, question?
How high is the fence, sir?
Let me just, it's a six-foot fence, sir.
What kind of fence is, is it metal?
Vinyl.
Vinyl?
Yes.
White, green?
White, vinyl white fence, solid slatting.
Any further questions? entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moving in seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's my mistake.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The color of the fence.
The color of the fence is clay, not white.
I'll make it white now, we voted, no.
Sorry for the discrepancy.
It's all right.
Okay, you're good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, please.
Last item, number four, 19-32-A, Jeffrey Portis. Applicant requests a variance from section 207.3 minimum yard requirements for accessory structures of the Monroeville zoning ordinance number 1443 as amended to construct a 12-foot by 16-foot shed that will encroach approximately eight feet into the required 10-foot side and rear yard setbacks for accessory structures. The property is located at 1162 Polgate Drive, tax parcel 857S224 in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Thank you. Anybody here to, for this? Come forward, please. Would you sign in, please, and state your name for the secretary?
Jeffrey Portis.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter should be the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Present your case, please.
I'd like to put a shed in the rear of my yard, the left quadrant. That's just unusable, unusable space that we have, so to the left, in the extreme left corner would be where the shed is.
What are we looking?
Whoa.
Is that your fence, sir?
Yes. Well, there's two fences. The wood fence is my neighbor's, the chain link is mine. It's hard to see, it's right behind those trees, but it's about maybe four feet between our two.
but there's about maybe four feet between our two fences.
Paul, any complaints on this one?
No correspondence from anyone.
Anybody in the audience?
Just general storage for the shed?
Yes. Yeah. One of the reasons why we need to do it because I have a car that, from the picture, that's in our front yard we need to put inside the garage, but we have so much stuff that we would be putting out into the shed. It's a car that's not made anymore, so it's fairly difficult finding parts for it. So I need a transmission for it.
It's one under the cover?
Yes.
All right, out of curiosity, what is it?
It's a 1993 Sol 900. So it was running, it was my daily driver till the transmission went. I have to locate a transmission. I had it at a place to be repaired, but they went out of business, told us to come get our, everybody to come get their stuff. So it has to sit there until I find a place, but that's not allowed to be in the yard. But we only have a single car driveway and it can't be on the street because I can't move it. So once we get the shed erected, we can get the car into the drive, into the garage. But hopefully, I get it back on the road, find the transmission, get it back on the road, but...
Any further questions from the board?
No.
Having none, I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I will entertain one more motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.